I hereby call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Education for Willmet Public Schools, District 39, this Monday, March 20, 2023. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Amy Paling.
Here.
John Caesaretti.
Here.
Ann Hart.
Here.
Bonnie Kim.
Here.
Frank Panzika.
Here.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes.
Here.
Erin Stone.
Here.
Principal Kelly Jackson is here and will introduce High Crest students to lead the pledge of allegiance.
All right, good evening. As we have shared at previous board meetings, across the 5'8" campus, we have been working on increasing and expanding our club offerings to students. At High Crest alone, we have over 25 clubs. We even have new opportunities starting after spring break in a couple of weeks, and one tomorrow, so that's very exciting. Student interest has guided which clubs have formed, and some students have even proposed clubs, which you'll hear about in a second. Many students have been involved in all of the fun. But enough from me, let's hear from you guys.
Hi, my name is Chloe Macharia, and I do coding club. I like coding club because it helps me develop a new skill, and I can make some new friends, and I can be with open-minded people.
Hi, my name is Liesel, and I'm in 5th grade. I am in these clubs Dungeons & Dragons, Lion King Junior Podcast Club, Pride Club, and Lights, Camera, Action. I started school in January. These clubs helped me make friends. I learned a lot from the clubs. I have fun in the clubs with my friends.
Hi, my name is Elliot. I'm in Science Club, D&amp;D Club, Shark Tank Club, and No Place for Hate Club. One reason I think I like clubs is because you get to connect with others over shared interests.
Hi, my name is Nathan Brown, and I am in the 6th grade. I am the founder of the Computer Club, and I was very happy the school set it up right away, and Ms. Clark said yes to be our sponsor. Families donated equipment that was needed, and this club has boosted my mood, and I feel more a part of my school. I also belong to the Coding and Science Club. Thank you.
Hi, my name is May, and I'm in 6th grade. I attend three clubs: Broadcast Feature Club, Science Club, and Shark Tank Club. I like Broadcast Feature Club because I can make movies that are reminders for my school, and I'm helping out my school. I also like Science Club because we get to do a lot of cool labs and experience. My favorite club is Shark Tank Club. This is my favorite club because Shark Tank is one of my favorite shows. We're going to start a new business soon, and I'm really excited to learn from the new experience.
Hi, my name is Phoenix. I'm a participant in the High Crest Cheer Club run by Ms. Eckley. I joined the Cheer Club because it helps me feel as though I'm more involved in the High Crest community. I get an exciting preview on what the cheer and dance team clubs at my future schools will be, such as WJHS and New Trier. Cheer Club is a great way to level up your understanding in counting music and dancing in unison. You can practice your cheers at home and with your friends, too. This is why I love Cheer Club.
Hi, my name is Kavya Marley. I'm in 6th grade. The clubs I am in are Pet Club, Shark Tank Club, and Student Council. I like these clubs because I can partially help my community, well, school community, for Student Council. For Pet Club, I can learn more about animals in general, as well as pets, and make things for my guinea pigs. And I like Shark Tank Club because I am learning a bit more about business and other parts of Shark Tank.
Hi, my name is Alicia Lee, and I'm in 6th grade. I participate in Debate Club, Science Club, Shark Tank Club, and Creative Writing and Newspaper Club. I love all these High Crest clubs because they allow you to pursue your interests or build new ones. You also get to meet a lot of cool people who share your interests. For instance, in debate, we learn to think critically and on your feet. Tournaments at the end of each session are exhilarating and fun. But also, we get to work with a community of debaters and collaborate as a team. Now, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for being here. You, I think, have inspired us all with your leadership and all of your interests. It's incredible to hear about all of your participation in so many of these clubs. So thank you for your involvement and for coming tonight and telling and teaching us all about it. Before you leave, I'm going to meet you over here to give you a small thank you, and then you can meet your families in the lobby. But thanks again for all you do for the High Crest community. Thank you, parents. There are a few clubs I think I sort of want to drop in on. I would like to direct your attention to the artwork on display. This is a wonderful sampling of 1st through 8th grade student work. Every March, we observe Youth Art Month by showcasing the talented student artwork created across the district. Youth Art Month emphasizes the value of art education for all children and encourages quality school programs. At this point, I seek a motion to approve the minutes of the February 27, 2023 Board of Education Regular and Executive Session Meetings. I move to approve the minutes of the February 27, 2023 Board of Education Regular and Executive Session Meetings. May I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions? Okay, all those in favor of approving the minutes as submitted, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Motion carries. This is an opportunity for public comments. Are there any community members present who wish to speak? Okay, seeing none, we will move to Board Reports. And we only have one, which is School Finance. Mr. Caesaretti.
Thank you, President Paling. In the last meeting, Committee of the Whole, the Board discussed, they reviewed and discussed options for contractual services for its financial accounting services. In January 2020, the Board approved Baker Tilly for a three-year contract to provide financial auditing services to D-39 and Wicksey. Baker Tilly's completed those three years doing a really good job during some unstable times. However, a lot has changed economically since initiation of this contract, which is now impacting a potential renewal. The Board reviewed information on single- or multi-year renewal options, as well as options to make a request for proposal. After discussion and consideration, the Board has been pleased with and appreciative of Baker Tilly's services. The Board acknowledged that it is prudent within the current economic climate to direct the administration to make a request for a proposal. That's it.
Thank you. Liaison reports, we'll start with Mrs. Hart for CRC.
Thank you. I attend the CRC meeting here at the MECE on Tuesday, March 14. As discussed, the topic this year is neurodivergent learning. The overall committee broke out into their various subgroups to work on their respective areas of the draft report. Toward the end of the meeting, all groups came back together to provide updates and receive feedback from the committee at large. Their next meeting will take place on April 11, where they will be finalizing the presentation for the Board, and that presentation will be here at our May board meeting.
Thank you. Educational Foundation, Ms. Stone.
Yes, the Ed Foundation met on March 15 here at the MECC. The primary order of business was the presentation and voting of the Spring Grip Grant, which was awarded to a proposal that Ann Jacobs and Becky Bartsch from High Crest Middle School had presented, requesting 16 movable whiteboards to be used in math classrooms. It was based on a book called Building Thinking Classrooms that talks about the importance of kids being able to stand and work collaboratively, and how important it is for them to be able to erase what they're doing so that it doesn't seem to them as permanent as they're doing their thinking. And in addition to that, let's see, the Fine Arts Group talked about their visiting artists that did screen printing has come to Willmet Junior High, and they're planning on having them come back. They're working on getting a STEM speaker for students as part of their STEM in the Real World program. They are hoping to expand upon their partnership with the theater company for children with autism and other needs. They did a performance at Mackenzie, and they're hoping that they can expand that to other schools. There's a movie night coming up on April 14, which is Super Mario at the Willmet Theater. Cheers and beers, and the Silent Auction is on April 28 at Double Clutch. There will be two bands. And the next meeting is on April 19 at 7:00 PM here at the MECC.
You're doing so much. Insurance Advisory Committee, Mrs. Hart.
The Insurance Advisory Committee held its annual meeting on Monday, March 14 at the MECC. District 39 is part of a health and dental cooperative called Cooperative 90s. District 39 is one of six organizations in this cooperative. Catherine Looney from GCG Financial reviewed D-39's utilization of health and dental insurance during the current plan year. The plan year is September 1 through October 31 each year. During the February Cooperative Board meeting, initial premium rates were shared. Initial projections noted increases in health insurance between 8% and 17%, as well as a 2.5% in the dental PPO premium. The Cooperative Board discussed several plan change options at the February meeting to attempt to reduce the increase in premiums. Final plan decisions will be determined at the Cooperative Board meeting later this week, and final premium costs determined as well. D-39 will have open enrollment at the end of May for implementation on September 1.
Is there any update from the Intergovernmental Working Group?
Yes, there was a meeting on March 8 that I was able to attend on our behalf, and it was a really great meeting. There were representatives from the village, from the park, library, the New Trier Township, and the New Trier High School as well, and Avoca, and administrative personnel. And we also had a number of, well, the topic for this year is mental health in our community, and there were a number of representatives from organizations that provide services. And it was really great to hear what they do, and also hear what they need. And so, a lot of the meeting was really brainstorming, and thinking about what our next steps would be, and who should be at the table if there were other people that needed to be there for us to listen to, and to determine really what we want to do with this. So if you have any ideas, I would love to hear them. We would love to hear them, sorry. So it was really, really great, really inspiring.
Thank you very much. And if you want to continue on with IASB and the legislative update.
I have no update on IASB, but I do have a legislative update. A number of bills have passed out of committee. There's been a flurry of activity, and nothing's really been enacted or anything like that. But, and I don't want to repeat myself because I named a number of pending bills last month, but I thought I would highlight just a couple. And if you're interested in more information, I'd love to discuss them with you. So I'm just going to go through these really quickly, a couple of them that caught my eye. House Bill 3442 would provide additional days for a substitute teacher to be in the same classroom. We could talk about that last month. Well, Senate Bill 2236 would repeal the end date of June 30, 2023, to the short-term substitute teacher training program. So that's trying to help alleviate the teacher crisis. Senate Bill 1994 would require school districts to submit quarterly to ISBE a report that includes the amount of funds the district has in reserves, the amount in reserves, and the number of days the district has cash on hand. It also forces any school district or school board reporting more than 250 days cash on hand to spend any excess cash on hand funds beyond the 250 days on educational services. As you can imagine, that's a little controversial. House Bill 2784, although it did pass out of committee. House Bill 2784 would create a new $20-an-hour minimum wage for school district employees who provide educational support services starting in the 2024-2025 school year. There are concerns here that without additional revenue, school districts would have to cut programming and increase property tax. Lawmakers are trying to work on that aspect of the bill. House Bill 2287 would ban the sale of traditional diesel school buses in the state of Illinois in 2028, and ban the use of non-electric school buses in 2035. As the bill stands, it isn't supported by funding, so there are, again, concerns about the implementation of such a plan. House Bill 2233 would raise the competitive bidding threshold from $25,000 to $35,000. House Bill 2396 would mandate full-day kindergarten in all Illinois school districts by 2027-2028, alongside a requirement that ISBE conduct a study of existing programs to determine how many districts are currently unable to offer a full-day program and the potential capital needs that some districts might have. That's it.
Thank you. There's a lot going on. Thank you. I will turn it over to you, Dr. Quemis Goley, for information items.
Thank you. We have a number of things to report. First of all, under, excuse me, written communication. Written communication was received by the Board from Melissa Petrie, a High Crest Middle School parent, regarding not being allowed to volunteer during the school day within accompanying younger sibling, and from Rob and Rebecca Totin, central parents, regarding behavioral incidents in their child's kindergarten classroom and the investigation and follow-up thereof. In terms of our administrative announcements, we have our K-4 parent-teacher conferences coming up. Our elementary spring parent-teacher conferences will be held at the end of this week, Thursday and Friday. Thank you to our teachers for all the time that they invest in supporting meaningful conversations and partnerships with our parents through these conferencing opportunities, and of course, to our parents for their consistently strong participation in these opportunities. This year, the district will be utilizing Meet the Teacher to support videoconferencing. This is a new endeavor for our district, although it has been a system used at New Trier for the past seven years, several years, excuse me, with tremendous success and really favorable reviews. So we're looking forward to this, but we also appreciate everyone's flexibility as we adjust. Videoconferences are encouraged for the spring conference opportunity and are set as default in the Meet the Teacher registration system, but requests are taken for in-person conferences as well, and those will be accommodated. We do ask whether meeting in person or via video, that all participants be on time for the conference and stay mindful of that 20-minute time slot. The Meet the Teacher videoconferencing will begin and end promptly at the designated times. For those of us who have participated in those at New Trier, it really does start and end on time. It is beyond the control of our teachers. That is, in some ways, helpful because it keeps everything on time, and we don't encroach on other people's time. But it also can be a little abrupt if it's your first time using it. So we ask that everyone be a little understanding of that, but also understanding of those times to keep everyone on track as we go through each of those conversations. Additional details are provided to families in their school newsletters, and we're excited to be trying out this new tool. Meanwhile, at the 5'8" campus, while our K-4 teachers will be engaged in conferences, our 5'8" teachers and staff will participate in a Day of Professional Development, Collaboration, and Learning on Friday, the 24th. The day is organized with a focus on our multi-tiered systems of support. The Board has heard a lot about our MTSS efforts. Sessions include learning and collaboration focused on the work of our foundations team, which is addressing behavioral expectations and supports, as well as aspects of social-emotional learning. There are also a variety of MTSS breakout sessions so that teachers can choose the sessions that are best for them and engage in the learning that best meets their needs, focused on academics, behavior, and SEL instruction. The afternoon also includes an opportunity for guided vertical collaboration among departments. So we look forward to a really active day on Friday for our teachers and staff. In addition, I know there was a report from our committees, from Committee of the Whole, but did want to mention that the Board reviewed student attendance as well. During the recent Committee of the Whole meeting, our administration shared information and reviewed data regarding student attendance this year. As we're coming out of the COVID pandemic, we're recognizing higher chronic absenteeism rates when compared to pre-pandemic rates. In examining the data, the majority of absences are for those who are identified with either illness and injury or medical appointments. So that is somewhat expected as students are still required to isolate following COVID diagnoses. We're also seeing an increase in some of the other illnesses that are happening within our population. However, we reviewed a variety of our strategies for education intervention and support that are currently in place and that we're considering for the future, and the Board directed that we reinstitute some of the programs in education and communication back with our families on the importance of student attendance. And so we'll be starting that. Want to make sure that parents know that we're starting that as well. I met with the PTA Council and shared that information with them also. We know that there are many choices families need to make, and so we recognize that when students aren't at school, they're missing a learning opportunity as well. So we want to re-center ourselves on the importance of attendance for our students. And then finally, in terms of spring assessments, last week, High Crest Middle School and Willmet Junior High School launched the state-mandated academic accountability assessments. Our elementary schools will be doing that after spring break. These tests include the Illinois Assessment of Readiness, or IAR. Unfortunately, we did experience an interruption. The state's assessment platform through Pearson was overwhelmed and shut down. So testing needed to be discontinued and rescheduled. That is, and can be, very frustrating for our students, as you can imagine, also for our teachers who planned for the day accordingly. So created a little bit of frustration and a need to pivot at both schools, as well as, quite frankly, across the state, as many schools were doing the same thing. So I just wanted to acknowledge the challenges and appreciate our teacher, staff, and students for their flexibility in light of those challenges. The IAR is an important accountability tool for our schools and for the state, and so we appreciate everyone's best effort on that. And I know some of that testing has already been rescheduled. I believe some of our students were testing today. So thank you, everyone, for your best effort as we complete those mandated assessments. And then finally, under Freedom of Information Act, the district received a FOIA from Josiah Chatterton of Local Labs requesting teacher information, including names, position, job, titles, departments, pay rate, year-to-date gross pay for the years 2020, 2021, and 2022.
Thank you. So we will move to our Board Policy Review. We have a first reading of many policies. So I will open it up for questions or discussion, unless there's anything you wanted to point to.
I had two real small ones, one just a tiny bit. In 4:140, under eligibility criteria, there's an enumerated list. Between 2 and 3, it says "or," but between 1 and 2, it doesn't say "or," or "and." But I assume it's "or," but... Along those same lines, in 5:20, I'm not sure how I taught this, but I did. In the first paragraph...
Frank, can you say that again? Is that 4:140? Under eligibility criteria, I believe he's referring to the list on page 1 of 2. So are you talking about the "or" that's at the end of line 2?
Well, no, there's a 1, 2, and a 3, your eligibility criteria. Between 2 and 3, it says "or," but it doesn't say "or," or "and" after 1. So I don't know if that means, I mean, technically, without that, it would always had to be 1? So just to clarify it.
Well, I think that's intentional. And it's like either 1, 2, or 3. But I mean, that's something that I guess you'll take a look at. Yeah.
And that was...
Bonnie, that's the intention, but we'll take a look at it and just make sure that grammar is correct.
Along the same lines, is that in 5:20, the first paragraph? There's a number of things enumerated. On the fourth line, after gender identity, there's a semicolon. Before that, they're all commas, and after that, there's all commas. So either that semicolon means something, or it should have also been a comma. Didn't seem like there was an obvious reason to separate the first ones from the second. And then in 4:165, in the first paragraph...
Give that number again for me, Frank, please.
1, 4:165. And it's either consistency or there's some meaning. In bullet number 4, in the first paragraph, there's a cross-out of inguine behaviors. But throughout the rest of the document, inguine behaviors is always included. So I'm not sure why, and actually even earlier in that paragraph, but definitely throughout the rest of the document, that's included. So I'm not sure why that was crossed out. I mean, it seemed inconsistent at the very least. There's a meaning, but it's inconsistent. Those are the ones that...
Is anybody else? So in 5:120, I think I know the reason for this, but I just wanted to check. It's the statement of economic interest, and the Board members were crossed off?
It's on page 3 of 3 at the top.
Yes, 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 yes. So is that because it's in a different policy? I'll double-check, but I think it's in the interest policy, in section 2, but I will double-check.
Header to that section.
Oh, yeah. So it's probably just been there, but now...
That's what I felt when I read it.
Okay, that would make sense. I think we might just be missing a word in 7:285.
All right, I see it, type it up. 5:120, page 3.
Oh, go ahead.
Prohibited interests, the header.
Oh, yeah. Isn't it funny how much we all miss?
Yeah.
Good catch. 7:285. 1 of 1. In paragraph 1, the numbered 1... In, in paragraph one, the numbered one, it says. The note I took said it provides for staff members, and I think there's a word missing, to receive appropriate training. Oh, it's in, it's number two, actually, not number one.
I did have one other general one. One of these was last revised in November, and several of them in April, May of last year. It's a lot faster than our normal cycle, is there a particular reason for that? I assume there is, but what is it?
Because we, we received direction from, like, you all to keep our stuff up to date and often touch that. So I revised them in November, and they revised them in November, and you're new to do that.
Please.
Well, thank you for keeping us on top of all that. So then this is a second opportunity for the audience to address the board. Are there any audience members who would like to speak at this time? The next order of business is the consent agenda under the action items. Are there any items the board would like pulled? Okay, Ms. Stone, please proceed with the motions.
I move to approve the personnel report dated March twentieth, two thousand twenty-three. I move to approve as first reading of Board of Education Policies, four, colon, one zero, fiscal and business management, four, colon, one forty, waiver of student fees, four, colon, one sixty-five, awareness and prevention of child sexual abuse and grooming behaviors, four, colon, one ninety, targeted school violence prevention program, five, colon, twenty, workplace harassment prohibited, five, colon, one twenty, employee ethics, code of professional conduct, and conflict of interest, five, colon, one ninety, teacher duties and qualifications, five, colon, two hundred, terms and conditions of employment and dismissal teachers, five, colon, two twenty, substitute teachers, five, colon, two fifty, leaves of absence, five, colon, two eighty, non-certified duties and qualifications, six, colon, fifteen, school accountability, six, colon, two fifty, community resource persons and volunteers, six, colon, two fifty-five, assemblies and ceremonies, two, colon, two sixty, complaints about curriculum, instructional materials, and programs, seven, colon, fifty, school admissions and student transfers to and from non-district schools, seven, colon, seventy, attendance intruency, seven, colon, one ninety, student behavior, seven, colon, two fifty, student support services, seven, colon, two eighty-five, anaphylactic prevention response and management program, seven, colon, two ninety, suicide and depression awareness and prevention, and seven, colon, three forty, student records. I move to approve the accounts payable for bills listed between February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three through March twentieth, two thousand twenty-three in the following amounts. Educational fund, one million seventy-five thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars and fifty-three cents. O and M fund, thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-four cents. Transportation, one hundred and ninety-one thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and ninety-two cents. Capital projects, four hundred and fifty-three thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety-seven cents, for a total all funds of one million, seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand, fifty-one dollars and sixteen cents. I move to approve the manual checks issued between February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, and March twentieth, two thousand twenty-three in the following amounts. Educational fund, seven hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents. O and M fund, eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars and eight cents. Transportation, ten thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars and twenty-six cents. Capital projects, seventeen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eight cents, for a total all funds of eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars and fourteen cents.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
John Caesaretti?
Yes.
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Frank Panzika?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider Fabes?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes.
Amy Palin?
Yes.
May I have it? Motion's carried, or motion, the consent agenda is approved. I seek a motion to approve the resolution for the resolution authorizing the honorable dismissal of teachers.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the honorable dismissal of teachers.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
John Caesaretti?
Yes.
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Frank Panzika?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider Fabes?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes.
Amy Palin?
Yes. Motion carries. This brings us to conference items. Any old business?
One item, I think it falls in the middle of this. I wasn't able to be at the Committee of the Whole, so I watched it on the video, which is the first time I've had a chance to do that. It's great with the Zoom, but not everybody speaks in the microphone, so. I'm on myself too, I'm sure, but, because I didn't go back and look at what I'm talking into, but as an observer, it was, it was clear that most people, but not everybody, was able to hear. And then a real quick one on the students' attendance review. I'm glad a lot of time was spent on that and a lot of good proposals. When it was brought up three, four plus years ago, the targets were significantly, well, the, the numbers were significantly lower and the targets were even lower. So there's a lot of room, it's a lot of detail to COVID, I'm sure, but still, there's a lot of room, and it was very important, and it still is very important, that the meeting voted out. One, one item that I would have brought up if I had been able to be there, to me, seventh and eighth grade, there's two things. One, the numbers obviously are higher, and that is a lead into high school. So, you know, if there's a twenty percent-ish number in seventh and eighth grade, then you go to freshman year high school, there's a, a learning curve, those, I'd hate to hurt twenty percent of the students to then turn into twenty-five percent in the freshman year. So there's also, in seventh and eighth grade, seems like a little bit more student responsibility for, for, for attendance, not just, you know, the parents and the family and the teachers. So I'd encourage, particularly looking at seventh and eighth grade and who are doing a lot, but to really look at the students feeling that it's important to go to school when they get to Nutria. If they don't feel it's important, then, you know, the numbers drop off, and it's really hard to make up, especially in the later grades, that many mistakes. It's an important topic, you're working on it, but I think the seventh and eighth grade in particular, not just because the numbers are high, but because of where they are in their career, whatever you can do to make that better, it's a good thing. Thank you.
Any new business?
I do not have a child at High Crest, so I was not there, but I heard around town this weekend that the High Crest Variety Show was a phenomenal event. Great participation, big energy, and a lot of very different talents that came out on Friday night. And I heard about an up-and-coming band for you all to look out for, which is the Hairy Knuckles. They were a big hit, so it just sounded very positive and a lot of fun and great participation.
I think that's so brave. Five hundred people were in the audience. So that is a lot to perform if you're peers, really.
Yes, it's really fun to hear about.
Any other good in welfare?
Yes.
I loved it. You had presented not so long ago about the need to improve upon the feeling of belonging, and you guys have moved at lightning speed, as evidenced by the students in all the parks. And so I just was blown over and just wanted to say thank you. I mean, that, that, that was fast.
The students are pretty amazing, and the staff who have volunteered to serve as sponsors, amazing, truly, just really, really impressive, and it's so fun to hear about our students being so engaged in, in school, both in class, hopefully, and also in the many aspects that make up your school community, so thank you.
So I, a couple weeks ago, I was able to attend the McKenzie Variety Show, which is the annual fundraiser where the parents sing and dance for a week after rehearsing for eight weeks and planning for much longer than that. But anyways, it was so great to see one hundred eighty parents, I think, participated. I mean, when, I remember when I started at the Variety Show, there were like eighty people, and like, you had to like make your movements really big to sort of like fill up the stage. But now there are so many parents who are participating, which is so great because to me, it was really important to demonstrate to my kids that I wasn't too scared to put myself out there. And, and they also, I met so many people through that, made so many great connections, including Frank's wife. And, but, you know, above all else, they're also raising money for a new playground, which is really, really exciting. And so it was such a wonderful event to support, and, you know, and my kids went to go see it, too.
Yes, everyone? Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss specific personnel negotiations, special education, individual student matters, and discussion of minutes lawfully closed?
I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss specific personnel negotiations, special education slash individual student matters, and discussion of minutes lawfully closed.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
John Caesaretti?
Yes.
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Frank Panzika?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider Fabes?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes.
Amy Palin?
Yes. Motion carried. We are now adjourned to executive session. Seven forty-three.